Okay, good evening, everybody. I will call this work session to order of August 13th. And we will be hearing about the Richfield Ice Arena Refrigeration Project. We'll be getting information and staff recommendations, and I will pass it to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, we have heard about the refrigeration project before at a really high level. Tonight, we bring you the details. And what we would like from you tonight is just to make sure that you're comfortable with our next steps, which would be to start the public engagement process on the project. Come back to you with the results of that public engagement and a more specific scope for the project on October 22nd. And I will turn it over to Director Merkel.
Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight, Madam Mayor and Council. You know, I started my position in the spring, and I would say the arena is probably the program that we have that surprised me the most. I think when we think of hockey, we think of a certain demographic that plays. And I think all the times I've been in the arena the last four months, I never know who's in rink one and rink two. And often, the doors aren't open, so if I peek in there, I'm always surprised. Just for example, this week, we have a group of Native American youth that flew here from Canada. They're renting the ice every morning this week. And then, in the afternoon, they either go to the pool or the mini golf, which is awesome. In March, when I first started, I went in and in rink two, all these young kids from Minneapolis through a grant called, through a program called Dynamites. Inner-city youth was learning how to skate. Most kids, you know, probably are with families that have never skated before, so it was very new for a lot of kids. And then throughout the summer, Tuesdays is my favorite morning to check in with Chris, because on rink two, the NHL rents the ice Tuesday mornings, and some of my favorite players are there. So we have some of the best skaters in the world. If I pop over on rink one on Tuesdays, we have chicks with sticks. Their moms learning how to skate. So it's been all ages, all demographics, all levels and abilities, from the best in the world to kids that probably never had that opportunity. So it's been great working with Bob. This is Bob Gavas. And Chris Wyby, a lot of you know the arena manager. And Chris and I actually met probably when I was 18. I went to college at the University of Wisconsin-Stevens Point. I was a goalie for the women's team. And Chris is the goalie coach for my rival, which is UW River Falls. So as a goalie, you always check out the other goalie and their coach. So we played the UW system a lot. And, you know, I've seen Chris, I guess, from over 20 years ago. So it's kind of ironic and awesome. We're here trying to better ice rink together. So tonight, we're gonna present to you about our refrigeration renovation plan. We'll have some time for questions at the end, and we can answer details along the way. But, yeah, at any point you have questions, just let us know.
Good evening. Thanks for listening to us here, I really appreciate it. I'm really looking forward to presenting this to you guys. All right, so the goals of this work session: Raise awareness of the Ice Arena Project. Explain the history of the facility and its connection to the community. Like Amy said, all the diverse groups that are coming into our facility. It's amazing, and actually, it's part of what makes our job really fun. It's not the same every day, not the same user groups, really diverse. And then introduce groups that will be affected from this project. Explain the project, including costs, and go through the project timeline and next steps. A little bit of the history of the Richfield Ice Arena. Rink one was built in 1971 with a direct R-22 refrigeration system. Rink two was built in 99 with another direct R-22 refrigeration systems. We're a little unique, a lot of rinks have one power plant. We have two. It makes us less energy efficient. We're gonna get into that, how this renovation is gonna really help us out energy-wise. And we have over 500,000 visitors that come through our doors every year. Again, those visitors range from little kids, adults, women learning how to play hockey, Native Americans from Canada. It's just a really diverse group that comes through.
The Magicians still playing?
The Magicians aren't, they're in the offseason right now.
Oh, okay.
And they'll fire back up here in three weeks.
Did they make it to playoffs this last year?
They did. They made it to the second round for the first time in their history. They won their first playoff game. Really cool momentum going there, yeah, yeah. And then, part of that, a cool part of my job is to work with the former NHLers and the current NHLers, and getting to know them, getting to ask them questions, and getting to talk into their brain, and getting to work with them is definitely a cool part of our job. And then, getting on all the different groups. Oh, do you have a question?
I just had a quick question, not to derail everything, but the NHL plays here in Richfield, which I think is fabulous. Is there any opportunity for folks to watch the practice?
Yeah, their practices are open, and they can come in.
I was told we should probably respect their privacy, though, too?
Oh.
Well, I mean, you can come in, it's just a, it's a public place, but we don't wanna, like, stop them from what they're doing, right?
Understood.
Yes.
My understanding is the reason why they like arenas is that people don't know about it?
Yeah. All right, some of the many groups that we have, obviously, the Richfield Rocks, the curling that was built over a year ago. We put that into our facility. It's been a fun addition and makes us more diverse. And we're gonna get, talk about getting into the diverse and into field. We're gonna turn the, hopefully with this renovation, we're gonna turn rink one where it's more diverse, and we can do field events off it, too, as well. Bloomington Kennedy Richfield Youth Hockey Association, the Dynamites, which Amy talked about earlier, was a really cool organization. It's a nonprofit, helping inner-city kids. I love having them at our rink, it's awesome. Adult Hockey Association, one of our biggest users because of our location. They're our biggest renters. It's over $150,000 worth of revenue that that group brings in every year, it's a big chunk of change.
Great.
Obviously, the Richfield Spartans that are co-op with Southwest Christian right now, and that's, it's on the rise. It used to be nonexistent, it's back, it's getting stronger. There's gonna be over 15 kids from Richfield on that team this year. We work strongly with the St. Paul Figure Skating Club. They run our Learn to Skate program. They bring in Skate St. Paul. They're also bringing the Upper Midwest Great Lakes Championships this year. That's a five-day event. It goes from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 o'clock at night. And all the participants are basically not from Minnesota. So they're flying in, they're using our hotels, they're using our restaurants, and it's gonna be over $30,000 a night rental.
And which, which group is this?
It's the St. Paul Figure Skating Club. And then, on the lower half, there is the Minneapolis Rec Association, another cool organization. It's meant just for kids to play hockey. They have one practice a week and then one game a week. It's a lot more affordable than some of the other ways of hockey. Some of the other youth associations are a little bit more intense, where the kids are on the ice five, six times a week. That's a little bit too much for some parents, and it's a little bit too competitive. So that creates a good balance. And then, the Minnesota Magicians, obviously, we've gone six years with them, which is, I think, is great. They had their most successful year last year. We program with them not just during the season, it's the offseason as well, with all their AAA practices and programs that they do. So they're bringing in revenue on the backside of the season. So that's the real addition with them. And then, we also work with a lot of their sponsorships as well.
What, I didn't catch that, what revenue on the backside?
So they rent ice on the backside, so on the swing seasons, so April through the end of October, they run AAA camps, and then camps during the day. So we're gaining that revenue because of that partnership. That's the stronghold of that.
I just didn't catch all the acronyms.
That's okay.
Thanks.
Yep. And then, Holy Angels, obviously, is a strong partner of us and a great thing for our community. And it's just been a great relationship with Holy Angels, too. And then, newly-formed ETS is the training center based out of our facility. They have been there for over a year. That's another good, strong thing for the community. This weekend, they have a signing with Alex Stalock and one of the Penguins, the NHL, where the community can come out and get a free signing and then learn about their program. That place has actually been amazing, more than I ever thought it would be. There's people in there training all the time, and they're coming from all over to train. A little history of the Magicians and the North American Hockey League. The Minnesota Magicians started playing here in 2013 and just finished their sixth season, which is awesome. We have an estimated 15 to 25 college and pro scouts attend each game. They gain us national spotlight for our facility and give us other ice rental opportunities. Simon, that's kinda what I was talking about earlier, is that other gap that they're creating. Average attendance per game is around 800, and they typically have 28 home games from September through April. Depending on how their season goes, that could continue all the way to May. Over 30 Division One commitments and over 20 Division Three commitments. Any questions so far?
Well, I just wanted to tell you, you know, one time Debbie Gotell and I were at the Magicians, and what do you call those, the round little things?
Pucks.
Pucks, yeah, there you go. Anyway, it landed right on my feet, and Debbie was looking. I said, "I caught it with my mouth." And she said, "Really?" She said, "Of course." So, you know, I mean, I didn't, but, you know.
Some of the local sponsorships that they have with the Magicians, that obviously is shared in four points, so some of the teams come and stay there. They have a partnership with local routes, so the visiting teams that come in, they use local routes. And then, obviously, advertise with them. They do the same thing with My Burger and Fireside, Chipotle, Domino's, Giordano's, and then Vinicopia. That's been a good thing, because I'm working with some of those partnerships as well, too. How does the Ice Arena benefit from the city? Diversifying the use of the facility, curling, broom ball, increases usage and exposure for youth to adults. So true, just all the different age groups that were covering and coming into that facility. Provide schools with field trip opportunities for ice skating or curling. That's something that we're developing new this year. It's, we're working with a fourth grade class. They're all gonna get a trip to the ice center, and they're all gonna get a public skating session. Youth programs and tournaments from surrounding communities and outstate all bring money into the community, restaurants, hotels, and retail. Just in the month of August, we have four hockey tournaments in a row. These teams are coming in from all over. We had teams in last weekend from Canada and Colorado, all over the place. So they're, again, they're coming in, using our hotels, using our restaurants. Dry floor events or turf can add to the facility, creating a flexible usage. That's something I'm really excited about. It's gonna diversify our facility even more so. Currently, we have a sand floor on rink one. If it's not ice, you really can't use it. It's just sand and piping. We can't really have events on that currently. Expanding recreational opportunities and city wellness programs Richfield has to offer. And that's probably something I'm more excited, working with Amy, that we're really trying to diversify and get this out to different parts of the community.
I was gonna ask you, Chris, what about, you know, that dry floor events and turf? Like, what, what are we talking about exactly?
We're gonna get a little bit into that. We've got some slides a little bit later on, but it's talking turf, softball, soccer.
Wow.
Lacrosse. Lacrosse. We can even do beanbag toss tournaments. We could do wine tastings, trade shows, golf shows. And I've got a couple slides that'll show that a little bit more, how it works.
Councilmember Supple?
So, when you're doing the partnership with the fourth grade classes, do you guys have skates for the kids that don't have skates? Or do they have to bring their own, or?
Yeah, we have, we have enough to outfit at least two to three classes at a time.
Nice, okay.
Really, that's gonna be exciting, too. I'm, I can't wait for that. Really good.
Nick Thompson's program, last year, we took in a lot of skates. So a lot of, we have a lot of used skates at our warming houses in the neighborhood parks. So our thought is, if they had the opportunity to learn to skate, they could do it, you know, within a close vicinity of their home at our neighborhood park, because we have skates there they can use as well.
This is a picture of our two compressor systems. Our current system is 48 years old, which is amazing. That's still working the way it is. A lot of that has to do with this guy sitting next to me, babying it, and just finding parts to keep it running. It's amazing the work that it goes into it, just to keep it afloat right at the moment. They will no, no longer manufacture R-22 as of January 2020. The cost of used R-22 will rise over $40 per pound in the coming years. We just put in last year 500 pounds at $15,000. And then, if you see, we have 7,000 pounds in our system. If we had a major leak, which we're gonna get into, it'd be very costly to the city. Some, certain compressor parts are no longer made, and costly modifications will need to be made. I think it was just last week that we just ran out of our last part for a certain, just a certain mechanism. We, it's just gonna be hard to get these parts, because they're not manufactured anymore. We just, we actually went to White Bear Lake when they were closing their rink down and grabbed a bunch of their parts a year ago, because we knew it was gonna be a problem.
You could ask a question?
No. Oh, thank you. The, the reason we, wasn't it some legislation that's the reason why we don't use R-22 anymore? Was it federal legislation? Okay.
Yeah, so, thank you for the question, Councilmember Garcia. The EPA is banning it at the end of this year, basically because it, it depletes ozone. It's one of the chemicals that contributes greatly to that. So they're banning it. And if you need more information, it's one of the attachments with the staff report, the EPA kind of reg sheet about it. But, yeah, it's just a hazardous chemical.
Then, if I could ask another question. So, what's gonna be the price comparison? Are we gonna be spending more or less because we're not using R-22?
We'll be using less, because we're going down to one plant. Our maintenance costs won't be so hard. We're gonna save about $30,000 just by doing the conversion.
Okay, great.
And then, our maintenance costs right now are high, because the parts are hard to get. The refrigeration, the R-22 is getting more and more expensive.
Yeah.
And we're having to call in tax more and more often.
Well, I noticed, I noticed that, this is just by the way, that people are, you know, they're doing little ads wanting to buy R-22. So it's still gonna be used, probably, but...
It's just gonna drive the cost of it up.
Right, yeah.
And it's, as of 2020, it'll all be used and not manufactured.
Yeah.
Are we stockpiling any R-22 now? Are we making any effort to do what we can for it to buy us some time?
I'd love to say that we are, but it's because it's so expensive. It would be just 500 pounds. We have, have currently 300 pounds just, you know, to fill up our system a little bit, sitting there. But it would be really costly to have, you know, 35,000 pounds, or, you know what I mean, 3,500.
Would it be possible to sell it if we had excess? If it goes up in value, if we bought it now, and then we bought ourselves a year, and then we'd have the excess? Sounds like there's already market for it.
There, there isn't, that's a good question, because when this renovation happens, part of the thing is, is that they'll take this R-22 and they'll sell it used. But the market value for used R-22 then goes down when it comes out of somebody's system. So it doesn't get, if that makes sense. What would happen if we had a major R-22 leak? It would cost over $160,000 per ice sheet to equalize the system again by purchasing reclaimed R-22. Obviously, if it all just went away, which it can happen, we just can't redo the system and be down for months and months. We would pollute the environment with hazardous ozone-depleting gas. That's one of the reasons they're getting rid of R-22. Lose existing ice sheet revenue for weeks and potentially lose customers. That's a big deal that we should be thinking about when we're doing this whole project. I've gotta alert those customers that I'm gonna be down, and they can't rent from me, so they have to go find ice, if that makes sense. Locating the leak is very difficult, time-consuming, and costly. A lot of these pipes are buried under ice. That leak could be anywhere in the system. It's not just in one area, it's going throughout the building. So it could be, you know, a couple days before we even find the leak. Why is it important for us to renovate both ice sheets? We host 12 to 13 hockey tournaments a year. The companies and associations would no longer use our location, because it would affect their profits. People are not gonna rent from us just because one sheet. It's more efficient for them to have one person there that can monitor the tournaments and have more games going on throughout the day. We would no longer be able to host the major figure skating championship events or support curling. When these major figure skating events come in, they literally use every room of our whole facility, every locker room, the Magicians locker room, the training center. They need that whole facility to use. We will be using an environmental-friendly refrigerant to replace, replace R-22. We'll be able to use rink one and rink two for dry floor events, such as craft shows, beanbag tournaments, wine tastings, Fourth of July events, indoor soccer and lacrosse. Allow for skating and dry floor events simultaneously.
I didn't know there was such a thing as a beanbag tournament.
Yeah, I actually have a picture of it.
Yeah, they're really popular by neighbors in a beanbag tournament, and he's second-place champion last week. So, yeah, I guess it's a thing.
And Katie and I did that last week.
Yeah.
We're teammates, so...
And who won?
We did not win.
And our rec department does offer it. We have, I think, right now, we have 25 teams that play weekly beanbags.
Councilmember Whaling?
I was just curious, and maybe these people who'd be inquiring know that we don't have this capability yet. But, I mean, have you had inquiries for these kinds of events already?
The dry floor events is a question?
Yeah.
Yes, and I think, actually, Bob, you can speak to this more, because he came from Inver Grove Heights, and that's an arena that flips over and does dry floor events. Maybe you can speak to that.
Yeah, so you can see some of the pictures here with the dry floor events. And as far as, you know, people seeking out your facility, there's a number of trade show vendors. Springtime is a big time for these, like, garden shows, home improvement shows that, that will seek out your facility if you have the capability of hosting one of these events. And it's usually, it's a pretty big thing for the surrounding community to come in and, you know, take advantage of an event like this.
I would add, too, we almost on a weekly basis turn away groups that wanna play soccer in Richfield, because we don't have the outside fields to accommodate a lot of teams. So it'd just be one more way to get kids, or adults, you know, playing soccer, especially in those months where you can't be out on the grass, because it'd rip it apart in March and April when the snow's melting. I did have Vinicopia approach us to if we could take the ice out currently, and they could do a wine tasting show, and, you know, at this time, we don't have that capability. So I, I'm confident if we had it, we would, we would book it, those months that we would not have ice in there.
And you're looking at the bookend months of March and April and September, where it's a little bit harder to use those fields. There's some examples of what you can do. Have you made you state? Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask what the turnaround time was to switch between them.
Good question.
Mm-hmm.
I'll answer that one.
So ideally, you're looking at, you know, a week, a week's timeframe to switch it in and out. If you're pushing the envelope, you can probably do it in three days, so...
But it, so it sounds like it'd be something that you'd have, like, a specific season you would switch it out for?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
There's certain season in the ice rental business that aren't as profitable, and that's basically the end of February to mid-April. So there's a six-week period there, and then September to mid-October, there's kinda your, your, your opportunities there to maybe gain some revenue doing some dry floor events. Most of our tournaments run from mid-April to the end of August, so there's kind of your, they're AAA tournaments that you're bringing in.
Councilmember Travis?
I was curious, have any, has anybody done any regional market analysis? It seems like there are not many, there's not many similarly situated event spaces if you don't go into Minneapolis, you know, in the surrounding areas. I don't know if Edina or Bloomington, does Bloomington have something in this, this size?
They do.
Oh, not, oh, not the rink, but I mean, the, the, the event, the venue size, to have a, to have, like, a trade show. Bloomington has a lot of opportunities, but this might be something that, I mean, I just, I'm curious. Is there something, how, how do we sit relative to the, to the market?
Well, as far as Bloomington goes, Bloomington usually keeps their ice in all three sheets year-round. They, they use their, they have an armory, I think they have, that they usually will host dry floor events in. So as far as, you know, being able to host larger events, I don't think they have the facility capable of doing that. That's to, I mean, with the, I mean, you could probably do it in a gym or something, but obviously, Richfield has a gym as well, too, so...
Well, I'm just thinking, we're so close to the airport, as we're, we're looking for an opportunity to distinguish ourselves and make Richfield a destination.
Yeah, yep, absolutely, yeah, yeah. It would be a great opportunity to, you know, pursue some of these events.
It's great to use it during the times that were not as profitable, too, right? As an ice arena, as a two-sheet facility. One of the reasons that Bob's so familiar with Bloomington is his dad was the arena manager there for 40 years. So quite the feat, I mean, he knows a little bit about it. And he actually worked there at that facility for a little bit. But, and one of the reasons they're so profitable, too, is because they have three sheets, so they wanna book all the tournaments there, if that makes sense. How much will the renovation save us in energy and chemicals yearly? We will save roughly $30,000 per year on utilities each year. We talked about it a little bit earlier. We will save roughly $5,000 on chemicals each year. We won't be using two condenser plants right now. Currently, we're using two condenser plants, and a lot of that chemical goes into making sure we don't have lesionsities coming out of those condensers. The new ammonia ice plant will save $10,000 to $15,000 on maintenance costs compared to the old R-22 system. Do you wanna talk about the, like, how we are slowly leaking out?
So each, each plant has a lot of seals and joints. And if you think about a car, for instance, you know, over time, certain seals and things start to just give way. It sees immense amounts of pressure. And just to keep our system running efficiently, we need to keep adding R-22 every two years, roughly, to keep our system running efficiently as possible. And that being said, too, you know, if you, if you're wondering, you know, can we find these leaks? It's, some of these leaks are so miniscule that it's not even worth, you know, trying to, trying to fix them. We try to tighten things up every year the best we can, but still, it's, you know, you can tighten everything up, and then your service techs can leave, and you're still gonna be leaking a little bit here or there.
Part of the project, too, would be adding a new Deskin HVAC system. Currently in rink one, we don't have a Deskin unit, so there is no really great way to get the moisture out of our facility. You can imagine being in Minnesota in those hot, humid July, August days and trying to balance that. We've got an old system that wasn't really designed to do it, but we've tweaked it enough to make it work. Unfortunately, that old system, what is it cooled with? R-22. So it's just another thing that we're battling.
Well, that's cool, if you can do that.
And we wanna make sure that our arena is dry, that those beams, those beautiful wood beams that we have on the top are dry and mold-free. And that's part of the reason adding a Deskin system would really help us out. Amy, you wanna get into the costs?
Yeah, so the fun part, the cost of the project. So we have gotten a quote to replace the refrigeration system and convert from the R-22 system to a one system that would be based with ammonia. And the quote's for $3.4 million. My predecessor, Jim Topitzoffer, had for several years in CIP money set aside a total of $430,000, knowing that this project and improvements were needed. So the total, you know, is, is close to $4 million. But what we'd like to do, and we'll get into that, is pay for the core of it with the golf course sales money that we have left over, and take the $430,000 that we have in our already budgeted money to purchase the HVAC system, get our bathrooms up to ADA compliancy. to purchase the HVAC system, get our bathrooms up to ADA complacency. We have a couple of spots on our roof that need to be fixed. And then to make sure we can offer the dry floor events, purchase turf. So we have quotes for all of those items and they're about three hundred and fifty-eight thousand. And bathrooms, we're unsure at this point, but we're sure we'd be able to cover that. And anything left over, there's a few spots in the building that we could make more ADA compliant looking at ramps versus stairs and things like that. So whatever we'd have left over, focus on some of those building issues. Every year that the project is not done, it goes up by about a hundred thousand dollars. And then, of course, the cost of the improvements would go up as well. There are some different funding scenarios. You know, we would recommend, and we'll get into that again, that we pay for it the full amount with the golf course sale monies that are, that we have as a city and then take the capital money and pay for those additional improvements. Other ideas that we have, we could seek out the Mighty Ducks grant. And I did speak with the Minnesota Amateur Sports Commission today. And they kind of spearhead efforts to push bills with the legislature for the Mighty Ducks grant program. It wasn't renewed in twenty seventeen, or twenty eighteen. But they do feel in twenty twenty, since the R twenty-two will be coming out of production, there's going to be more pressure on legislatures from municipalities to bring it back because they'll start feeling that financial pinch of having to pay more for the R twenty-two. You know, so at this point, there's, the grant program isn't there, but there's a possibility it would be renewed for next year. Another source of funding is private partnerships. And what we mean by that is we go out and we partner with different hockey youth associations. And for a certain amount of money, they're guaranteed different ice time and different days of the week. And that's really popular at a lot of the other arenas. So there is, as you know, some sense of urgency, oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to, to mention something. I had heard that there might be some funding at the county level for some parks and rec facilities grants. Wondered if you guys had heard that too and if that was in the mix.
Yeah, no, there is another grant, I think it's a facility, recreation facilities improvement grant that we could also apply for. The timing's a little off, but I think from my understanding is they will reimburse you for work that's already been done for facilities. And it's up to two hundred and fifty thousand. So it definitely will help and I know we pursue those type of monies. With the sense of urgency for the project, the costs of replacing one sheet versus two, the second sheet only adds about seven hundred thousand dollars, varying with construction labor wages yearly. And the cost of the total project for materials escalates every year by a minimum of four percent. And with the elimination of R twenty-two production, it, you know, put the cost at the demand end of the market. And it'll be really hard to know how much we're going to have to pay, particularly if we have a major leak. It would put us out of operation for a while. Or worst case scenario, it becomes cost prohibitive to, to purchase a lot of it. And every year, we are losing or leaking R twenty-two. And we have to add roughly five hundred pounds to keep our system operating efficiently. We are already seeing mechanical failures with a lot of the equipment. I know one of the things Chris has said when I first started is it's amazing we still have this original system. I think it was built really well, but it's, you know, been piecemealed together to keep going. But we're lucky it's, it's still working as well as it is. Our prime location, we continue to be in high demand for our ice time in our facility. You know, as all of you know, we're really easy to get to off the freeway. We're close to the airport for teams that fly in. And the timing of this project will be competitively bid by many arena contractors. So the next step, I think for us, we'd like to secure our quote in November to make sure we get our pricing for the work that would be done next year. And what the company and what we would prefer is to do the work May through kind of early September because that would limit, you know, the effects on how much revenue we would be out with that lost ice time. And for part of the project, we would be able to keep one sheet of ice and keep skating for a while while we start the project on the other and then flip it. So there'll be hopefully minimal time where we're down both sheets of ice. But we'd like to start public engagement as soon as possible, like late August through September through mid-October. And we'd like to, you know, definitely have open houses, tours, discussions with the community and bring people into the arena so they can see the facility. I know, just get as many people in so we can explain the project, answer questions. We like to bring the community feedback to the council at the end of October and then get a council vote October twenty-second and that will help direct our next steps then. So our staff recommendation will be replace both ice sheets and use one new ammonia refrigeration system. It'd be less disrupted to our customer base and affects one summer of ice rental. If we bring it out to, you know, doing one sheet one year, one sheet the next year, it would affect more of the customers. We will see a significant energy savings on an annual basis. We'll no longer be using a refrigerant that's harmful to the environment, that's ozone depleting. And we will become a more versatile facility by being able to host the dry floor events. Option two is that we would replace one refrigeration plant now and defer the second sheet to a future time. We would have to find a safe location to store the R twenty-two from the old system. And we'd not be able to save on the energy costs of having one combined system. We'd have a hard time finding the replacement parts for the, the old plant that we'd still be using. We wouldn't be able to implement the dry floor events. And the cost to do one refrigeration sheet versus two is, you know, estimated seven hundred and fifty to nine hundred thousand dollars. And then option three, we could keep our current system. But it does put it at, us at risk with the inflation of R twenty-two and not knowing what will happen is there's more demand and less product. We'll see the higher energy costs and the replacement parts that are no longer being manufactured, just the challenge of finding them and the cost of, of fixing things. And when that happens, we do risk the time of just being down with no ice for our customers.
And this is just the final quote that we got from our company that already, we've already paid for the engineering part of this. So this is the up-to-date numbers that you can see.
Yeah, they're a little hard to read.
All right, that one didn't transfer over to the PowerPoint.
Yeah, but on the bottom, it kind of echoes what we said. The estimated twenty nineteen cost is three point four. Twenty twenty cost three point five. And then twenty twenty-one is three point six eight million.
Is there any further questions?
Councilmember Chapman?
I was just wondering, on an annual basis, does anybody know, you know, we, we bring in revenue. I have, our costs exceed our revenue. How much does it cost for us net? Not, not the gross amount, but I assume it does make a profit, how much does it cost the city on an annual basis?
There's a couple of different ways to answer that and the guy down there can answer it. They flowed a hundred thousand into the facility to keep us even balanced.
Yeah, I've started an annual operating transfer. I started about two, three years ago. Years ago, when the golf course fund, when the golf course closed, we had, I mean, this is the funding source we're talking about. The auditors recommended that we started taking interest earnings out of that fund and transferred into the ice arena. That was great until the recession hit and then interest rates straight up and there's no interest earnings to really transfer. I mean, I'm talking five to ten thousand dollars a year and it really didn't matter. So I wish I would have started it sooner, but then I started doing annual operating transfers about three, four years ago. And right now, I'm up to a hundred thousand dollars a year into the ice arena, into the pool. And I did ten thousand dollars, I think, into the mini golf special facilities fund. But now I'm concentrating everything into the ice arena and mini golf. I do, do know right now, as of the end of July, the ice arena is showing a net profit or a net, net operating income at the end, as of the end of July. And that's without the transfer and things like that, so.
Good job, guys.
That's kind of exciting to us. That's what we're trying to model in all our facilities is to turn them around and make sure we're not taking as much as we need. And a lot of that is the relationships we've built with our customers. This place is packed, the parking lot is packed. That's what we've done. So I hope that you believe us, believe in us, okay?
Councilmember Whalen?
A few questions. While we're talking costs, I can't remember, there were three different cost savings. I can't remember if it was five thousand or fifteen thousand for maintenance. Do we, do we have an estimate on this, this new system, kind of what the lifespan of that is? I mean, is it also going to last forty-plus years or is that kind of a miracle for any system to last that long?
Typically, you'll get thirty to thirty-five years out of one system. Yeah, you'll have to usually replace the floor at thirty years.
Okay, and then, so, and I'm guessing that, that maintenance cost savings would probably be good for at least a decade and then it sort of slowly starts creeping up again?
Yep, and the type of compressor that we'll use will have less maintenance associated with it, so.
Okay. Then the other cost question was, have you run like an estimate of how much revenue we'd lose during construction? I mean, that's sort of unavoidable, but.
Yeah, that's going to be that four hundred to four fifty during that time you'd be down.
Oh wow, okay.
So right now, I believe we take in over nine hundred thousand dollars of ice revenue. So it'd be, we're talking four to five months, you're going to be down for sure.
Are there questions?
Well, I'm, I'm just curious. For example, if, if all of this is real popular and we fill up the parking lot, where do we park if we need to?
We'll have a spot for you.
Good.
I want to say too, this is not unique to Richfield. I think most cities in Minnesota with an ice rink are having these same hard conversations right now because of the R twenty-two. I know the legislature, after talking with the Minnesota Amateur Sports Commission, there's a lot of pressure on legislatures right now to help out with municipalities because it's a huge expenditure. We're a hockey state, most towns have arenas, so, you know, we're, we're not unique to this.
There, there's a hundred and ninety-nine ice sheets in Minnesota and still two-thirds of them are using R twenty-two.
Councilmember Seppel?
I wanted to say thank you for all this information because I think it's going to be good to do the community outreach because there's a lot of stuff that I don't think people are aware of. There's a lot of information here that'll be news to people and I think it'll help explain the need for it.
I had a couple of questions on, on what you're hoping to get for the, in the community outreach sessions. Is it just informational? Will folks have a chance to weigh in and on what type of things can they weigh in on?
Yeah, well, I was thinking for community engagement to reach the most people, offer it a wide variety of times and dates of the week. Have some table discussions. I do think we do a presentation probably scaled down from this with not this much information. Offer tours, answer questions. I mean, I'm sure people will voice their opinion whether they want it or not. I think some of the extra stuff, like the HVAC and the roof, I think that will just make the, the facility, the longevity of it go better. But I mean, some of that could come off the table if, if there was huge objection, but I think for the longevity, it should stay in. But I think overall, just whether people want this in the community would be the feedback we'd want. And I think after we talk about who's coming to the arena, I think for some residents, they've never walked in the door. When you start seeing who's actually there, it's a wide variety of people. It affects a lot of people. You know, they might be more open to it.
So based on that, I mean, I, I think, well, I want to know more, but also make sure we're clear with the residents in something like this, if there's a majority that says no, then does that mean we don't move forward? Is, do we let people know this is informational to the council or, or what would that piece look like?
I think it'd be information for the council for you to make the, the best decision. You know, some of the feedback we have might be today. This is a facility that's been around for decades. It could be decades to come and provide wellness and opportunity for more people than just the handful we hear from. So I think it would be something you would weigh for your vote in October.
Thank you. And then, can you just give us a little bit of context about the golf course sale when it happened? And then you talked about the fund and how much is in that fund?
Actually, the golf course wasn't sold. It was closed by the airport where we, the golf course sat on airport land. And when they built the north-south runway, they basically closed the airport. I was here when that happened and I was negotiating with the, per the lease that was signed. And that was a negotiation with the airports commission. I was able to secure about eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars from MAC for all the capital improvements that we put into the course. And at that time, I think the golf course fund had approximately two million dollars in it. I, I'm just guessing off the top of my head. And right now, the fund has approximately three point four million dollars in it. And we've essentially just been using the fund for other funding sources. It has, we've loaned money out to a couple of different recreation projects and things like that. So there are internal loans that are being paid back into the fund. In fact, there's, I think, at least one to have them and then one for the defeasance of the bonds for the second sheet. And that's got like two years to go and then have them is, as, as we get, as we get engraving revenue in, I write down the loan a little bit. But that's, I mean, the golf course when it existed was, made money. And it's still.
What year was that?
You're really testing my memory here.
It's like eighty.
No, I think it was about ninety-nine, two thousand, I think, is when it closed, I think.
That's when I remember.
Really? I thought it was before then.
No, it was right around that time, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
I taught my son how to play on the par-three course, so it was kind of a bummer.
Can I, can I ask a question regarding that?
Yes.
Like when we first got the golf course, we were paying like one dollar to the MAC.
There was a, I, there was a formula, if I remember correctly, in the lease where the golf course made money. There's a formula that we calculated and we paid a portion of the profits to the MAC. And we, they were making money off us at the end, I mean, a lot of money. I mean, the golf course was probably generating, oh God, I hate to say this, but they were doing very well. By that time, they closed us down. It was kind of sad that, well, obviously it was sad that they did. It was a great location, it was a very busy course, they generated a lot of rounds.
Well, that's another kudos to the, to the staff because that was, that came from nothing, you know. We were just, and all of a sudden, it was generating a lot of revenue, so.
I have a couple of other questions and I think others do too, so I would like to kind of hurry up through these next few ones. So if we are using the, this money that's put aside, the three point four million, was that, would we be taking anything away from anything really important? I mean, where, or is this kind of been set aside for this?
Being an accountant and being conservative, I like to see cash reserves. But, you know, we use this money for this purpose, it's gone forever, it's gone for good. But we're kind of between a rock and a hard place. So, and it's recreational money, so it's a good purpose to use it for the ice rink and things like that. So, I mean, I don't see any other alternative other than to use these funds. I mean, I think that's probably the best use of them. It's just, you know, I don't like to see cash reserve go away, but, you know, it's, it, you know, you put, like I said, we're between a rock and a hard place.
And then my last question is, I'm assuming, and we kind of touched on this, I'm assuming there's the possibility of, of increasing the revenues by quite a bit potentially, correct? Okay, so that's it. Councilmember Whalen, I think you had a question?
Yeah, I just echo, had a similar question to what the mayor asked. Just with the public input process, just so we'd be very clear upfront, like, I think, obviously, a huge portion of that is the getting the information out, getting the tour out, which I think is always good. But just being very clear of exactly like what is still on the table and what's, what's being decided and how much control residents have over it so that we're not creating this expectation that they get to decide if there's certain things that are not on the table anymore. But the, the bigger question I have. But the, the bigger question I had, so seeing kind of your eyes light up as you describe the, the dry floor options, I can tell that that's like a, a dream that has been there for a while. Are there, are there like other sort of big picture, like dreams for the ice arena that could be, I guess that this would preclude or that, I mean, seeing that, doing a second, I mean, any construction project, the more you add on is going to be cheaper than doing another thing down the road. I guess my question is, are there other pieces in the next decade, 15 years, whatever, that are kind of in the imagination that would be worth considering now as well and combining them?
Yeah, I think, well, we recently spoke to Tria about becoming a major sponsor of the ice arena and perhaps they would have a presence, like a sports clinic attached or within the ice arena for players. I think a huge dream, if you want to dream big, I'd love to have a tap house somewhere close by. We have a lot of parents that don't want to sit in the arena and talk. They want to go have food and drinks. So, I don't know, something with food. I know the city of Chaska has something similar. At their curling center, they have a tap house connected with it.
Okay, so I think we need to wrap up here. Do you want to get some feedback from the council on?
I do, Mayor. What I'm hearing so far, and I just want to clarify, is that you're, you're comfortable with next steps, but that public engagement process, that we're really clear, that we're seeking feedback on the details of the project, but that doesn't change the fact that the status quo is really not financially responsible because of the situation with the R22 refrigerant and, and the fact that it's, the current system is built in 1971. So we'll be clear about that. Also, that, you know, this, this project is, this is one of the few Richfield amenities that brings people from outside of our area. So I think that's going to be really clear. We need to make that really clear to residents during that engagement process and that is more informational.
Councilmember Garcia?
Well, I just, I think most, most of the constituency, most of the community don't really understand, you know, how things work. It's, they, they make things simple, like the city's got so much money that, you know, why can't we do this or that? But this shows that it's a complicated, you know, situation. And I, you know, hats off to, to you guys that, that run it because it really, I would think, I don't think I'd ever want to do a job like that because just, just the calendar of figuring out who's going to play when and whatever, which is bad. But, but you have really done such a fabulous job and I'm glad that, and I would, I think we would, should support option one. But I really, I really liked the way you presented it because it was straight to the point and without, you know, getting really into, in, in, into stuff that would be difficult to understand and I think the public would appreciate that too.
Thanks.
Other remaining comments? Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think this is a great presentation and I just appreciate, just like Councilmember Wayland pointed out, I can see the passion and I know Mr. Weeby, we've had an opportunity to tour the, the facilities, just you and I and your passion, your commitment and everybody and, and Director Markle, we've, we've talked about it. I know you guys take a lot of pride in it. And as much pride as I took in it, I assumed it was, it was a loss and not revenue positive or not, not profitable for the city. So I think that's one of those key communication points. As much as I loved it, I assumed we were subsidizing it, not that it's helping us. And just like City Manager Rodriguez pointed out, that this is our, our regional poll. I think we're at, we have a moment where Richfield's changing and we can poll even more and we can only, we can poll revenue from our property tax base or we can poll revenue from other folks that are coming to visit Richfield. And this is just a critical opportunity. So as you think about the engagement, I would look regionally and not just to our residents to engage, and maybe you're already thinking of that, but our regional chambers of commerce and we have our tourism board that's coming up and that's on the agenda, that we're partnering with them, we're leveraging those relationships. We're talking to hotels in Minneapolis and in Bloomington to say, this is an opportunity for your trade shows. What do you guys want to see? What would help you create, you know, opportunities for you to bring events here? So then they, those, those relationships, I think, are critical too because they're the ones that are going to make it great for our residents. And so I'm just really excited. Thank you guys for, for putting so much, not just work, but, but love and care and affection for our community in the, in the ice arena.
Councilmember Wayland, any comments?
And I would just like to echo what everyone else has said. Thank you so much for your passion and commitment to this. This is, I mean, I really knew much less about the ice arena than, than I'm learning today. And I think this is such an amazing opportunity, as Councilmember Troutman said, let's think big. And I don't know if we can say the city is redoing our ice rink and, you know, get input because I don't really know that there is another option, so I don't want to put that perception out there. And this is a once-in-a-lifetime or 30-years opportunity to really revisit all of these different things. So how do we look at maybe putting a tap house, maybe getting regional partners here? So we're super excited and thank you so much for coming and presenting. And I will adjourn this meeting.